The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
I call to order the January 3 meeting, quasi judicial meeting of the Cary Town Council at this time. And to start off the meeting, I would ask that everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed. Motion carries unanimously. We move to item number two, a swearing in ceremony. I have things to read here, and I'm not going to read them because I can tell you that the next item is a dear friend of mine that I've known for about 10 years. It seems like I've known her all my life. Gail Adcock used to be a member of this council, used to be a mayor pro tem on this council, and she's become a beloved friend of everybody on this council. We love her to death, and it's just such an honor and a privilege to have the opportunity to be a part of her swearing in ceremony. So at this time, I would like to invite Gail, her husband, and her two sons to the podium. Now, Gail has a lot of friends, and many of them are here. And I know it's out of the ordinary, but all of your friends want a good photo shot of this. Come on, Dad.
Okay, I'm going.
I think everybody's ready to go.
That's Harold's best side.
So I would ask that you first place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. Do you, Gail Adcock, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I, Gail Adcock, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
Do you swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of a member of the House of Representatives according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you God?
I, Gail Adcock, do swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the office of a member of the North Carolina House of Representatives, according to the best of my skill and ability, according to law, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Rock star in the legislature. Now if we could only get a few more rock stars. Pause just a moment to allow all those folks that came here for Gail to have the opportunity to exit.
You're missing the best part, quasi judicial.
We have one item on the quasi judicial meeting tonight, and that's item three, number one. It's the first evidentiary hearing, Oaks at Turner Creek, 15 SB 007A. This case is before us tonight because the applicant has requested modifications to the town's development standards. As a reminder to those in the audience and those that are attending, even though we are in the council chambers, an evidentiary hearing is more like a court case. Counsel acts like the judge, and we can only accept evidence that is competent, material, and substantial. The North Carolina and the United States constitutions give the applicant certain due process rights in the evidentiary hearing that counsel must comply with. Now, I'm going to read you my apology. The state really ties our hands on what evidence we can accept and the reasons that this needs to be a different type of hearing. I apologize in advance for what might seem a burdensome or a complex process. This may feel like to those who are with us this evening that are not listed as experts. It's not that we don't appreciate you attending and voicing your concerns, but the state really confines us to certain types of evidence that we can't consider. We will only consider competent material, substantial evidence from anyone who testifies. By law, we can only accept testimony from expert witnesses regarding whether this is development, whether this development will affect property values, and whether it will increase traffic resulting from a development will pose danger to public safety, et cetera, et cetera. In other words, unless you're an expert witness, you cannot give us your opinion. An expert witness who is qualified with special knowledge or proficient in a particular field is allowed to give those opinions. Our contractual attorney, who's sitting to my left, will help us determine who's an expert and what evidence we can consider. There are detailed procedures on the printed agenda for our meeting tonight. All speakers who want to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by our town clerk, Mrs. Johnson, who's to my right. We'll pause just a moment at this time to allow those individuals who'd like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths, and counsel will pause until that has been completed. This time, I'm going to ask council members if they've had any site visits, expertise communications, financial relationships, specialized knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting on my left with Mr. Yurha.
No, sir, I have not.
Ms. Bush.
I have not.
Ms. France.
Sir.
Mr. Smith.
I have none.
Ms. Robinson.
I have not.
Mr. George. All right, very good. Based on the disclosures we have had from council members, I'd invite anyone at this time to approach the podium if they have an objection to a council member's participation in this hearing. Seeing none, we'll continue, and I'll open the quasi-public hearing and call Mr. Loveland of our staff for the applicable approval criteria, whoop, for the introduction of this item. Skip the line, sorry.
That's okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, good evening, counsel. MI Homes of Raleigh is the owner of the Oaks at Turner Creek subdivision and is here before you today seeking approval of a single modification request concerning required roadway improvements. The subdivision itself received previous staff approval, therefore does not require counsel action tonight. This is approximately 16-acre site that's located on the northwest corner of NC-55 and Turner Creek Road. The subdivision itself is a 45-lot residential detached subdivision. So conventional residential subdivision was approved on June 8 of this past year, 2016. The approval included road improvements, a widening along its front edge of NC-55, which is approximately 900 feet. That was required because the current comprehensive transportation plan shows a four-lane median divided cross-section for NC-55. So they had to provide some widening and a payment in lieu for the landscape median. So you can see a picture of the existing cross-section out there now. It, of course, is a five-lane section with no landscape median. Again, the approved plan, excuse me, the approved plan called for widening to accommodate for that future median and a payment in lieu for a grass median. The modification request tonight is for elimination of the road widening, elimination of the payment in lieu for the grass median, but inclusion of a payment in lieu for a two-foot bike lane, 100% payment in lieu. Let's explain a second why that comes into play. On the left, you have the current comprehensive transportation plan. You can see there the red star showing the location of the site. And just to the east of that adjacent is the designation for NC-55 being the four-lane landscape median thoroughfare, which is why they had to show a widening. They're seeking a modification which would put them in alignment with the draft of the new comprehensive transportation plan. Counsel is aware of that as part of the new community plan that has been tracking through the review process that is scheduled back before counsel later this month as part of the community plan for review. So the applicant will be here presenting a case that this modification request would be in alignment with the new comprehensive transportation plan. So that sums up staff's presentation. I will be back after others have presented their testimony to present our final statements and, of course, to answer any questions counsel has.
Thank you, Mr. Loveland. At this time, I'll call in the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the Town Council. I'm not Jason Behren. I'm sure you miss us pretty bad. My name's Neil Gosh. I'm with the Morningstar Law Group. We're now located at 421 Fayette Street in Raleigh. Just today was our first day at our new office. I'm here on behalf of MI Homes for this payment in lieu request, and we have with us tonight Jeremy Medlin with MI Homes and Robbie Bell with Bass Nixon Kennedy. He's the engineer for the project. First, I want to move into the record, into evidence, any exhibits or exhibits in the staff report that were relied upon by staff for their presentation, and we have some exhibits that we will offer in evidence as well. At this time, I'll call my first witness, Mr. Robbie Bell. If it would be okay, I'd ask Mr. Bell is up here so I can question him.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Bell, could you please briefly give us your qualifications?
Yes, I'm a professional engineer in North Carolina, and I've worked, I'm president of Bass Nixon Kennedy, and I've worked in Cary since the mid-'70s. So I'm very familiar with Cary's processes and some of the developments going on within the town.
Could you give us your technical qualifications, your education background?
Yes, I've got a bachelor's science in civil engineering from NC State and an environmental professional degree from NC State.
I'd like to tender Mr. Bell as an expert witness in the field. Show you this document. Do you recognize this document?
Yes, I do.
And can you tell us what it is?
It's the probable cause to build an additional two-foot bike lane.
Was this prepared by you?
Yes, it was.
Excellent. I'd like to move this document into evidence.
Okay. Was that included in the staff report?
It is not. The numbers are, and there was a letter that, a cover letter that was associated with this request that, the statement of that letter is reproduced in the staff report, but this is not. This is a letter that was actually prepared by Mr. Bell.
Please understand that anything introduced during the meeting that was not in the staff report is going to ask me to ask the counsel if there needs to be a continuance.
The information in the, I appreciate that the information in the letter is in the staff report.
Now that staff, now that council members have had an opportunity to look this over briefly, any objection to continuing with this?
No.
Okay, very well. Proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Bell, in arriving at this estimate, did you employ methods that traditionally would be used in estimating project costs of this type?
Yes, I did.
And in your professional opinion, is this a reasonable estimate of the two feet, two-foot of bike lanes along NC-55?
Yes, it is. Yes.
And in your professional opinion, does this payment in lieu advance the goals and purposes of the ordinance?
Yes, it does.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all the questions I have for the witnesses at this time. We have, as I told you, Jeremy Medlin is available with MI Homes, as is Mr. Robbie Bell to answer any questions you have, and at the appropriate time, I'll give a closing statement to wrap up the project.
Very good, thank you. At this time, I'll invite speakers who have been sworn in, who wish to speak in support of the application, to approach the podium. And I would invite a first speaker forward. Anyone else to speak in support? Seeing no one. I lost my place. Okay. A cross-examination of the witnesses, that we've had one witness so far. Okay. Well, now I'll open the hearing to those who are opposed to the request. As a reminder to those testifying, the applicant's representative has the right to object to your testimony. He or she may object while you're speaking. I may object while you're speaking. We have the right to do that. Our contractual attorney will also interrupt if necessary when an objection has been made. He will give the counsel options on how to proceed, whether we should move forward with the objection or not. Please, at this time, I would invite our first speaker forward in opposition. Anyone to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, we'll continue, and I'll ask staff if they have any additional information to add.
And I may briefly yield the floor if the attorney wants to make his closing statement, and then I can come back and...
Okay. This time, I would invite the attorney forward to make a closing statement.
Hello again, Neil Gosh with the Morningstar Law Group. This request, as you know, is meant to be consistent with the comprehensive transportation plan that is part of the draft Cary community plan that I believe will be approved in a few weeks. The plan is, instead of providing for a payment in lieu of the road improvements that was required under the current and in effect comprehensive transportation plan, is to provide a payment in lieu of, in the amount of 100% of the road improvements that would be required under the draft plan. We are seeking this payment in lieu request under Section 8.1.5a 3 of the LDO, and that section requires the counsel to make two findings in order to approve the request. We submit that we have introduced evidence sufficient for the counsel to approve this request. I'll go through the requirements briefly. The first one is, are the required improvements to NC-55 in this case not necessary or desirable at the present time but will be needed in the future? The staff report and the staff presentation speaks to this criteria. First of all, the road improvements are not needed at this time in that they're actually not required under the current comprehensive transportation plan, but they will be under the draft plan, which is set to be approved, I believe, later this month. And the payment in lieu amount is for the, given all of the information that we have, is the payment in lieu amount is for those road improvements that are, that will be desirable at a later time, which is the bike lanes. The second criteria is, does the amount of the payment in lieu offered by the applicant advance the goals and purposes of this ordinance? The testimony of Mr. Robbie Bell and his expert opinion, he testified that he did think that the payment in lieu offered did, does advance the goals of this ordinance. So we believe we have introduced evidence to each of the criteria that is required for you all's approval, and we respectfully ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go into the deliberative phase of our meeting, I would ask council members if they believe there's anything that's been introduced or said that warrants a continuance of this hearing. Okay? Well, now I'll go into the deliberative phase of the hearing, and I open it up to council members.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just briefly, since I wanted to allow Mr. Gosh to get in his closing statement, I was going to briefly offer some observations, but to be honest, I think Mr. Gosh kind of wrapped it up what I was going to say. Wanted to make sure you understood that the partial payment in lieu that they're offering covers the full cost of the two-foot bike lane, which is part of the cross-section for the five-lane thoroughfare in the draft comprehensive transportation plan. And then just wanted to review the approval criteria, but Mr. Gosh really hit on that. He did correctly quote the applicable section of the ordinance. So I'll just leave that up here for you and as well as for the audience to reference. And aside from that, I'll just state that Ken Dunn and myself are available for any questions.
Okay, very good. Any need to cross-examine? Okay, very good. Now we'll move into the deliberative phase of the hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments.
I just have one question. There's a sidewalk along that area. In order to provide the extra two feet, will the applicant also be moving the sidewalk to, so that we don't lose the sidewalk?
Not sure what the cross-section is, so I'll yield to Ken Dunn a transitation on that.
Yes, so traditionally, we've not really gone in and built that, and they're asking for the payment in lieu for that, so wouldn't it be built at this time? But we've traditionally had, when these improvements have been made, like, or when these have been proposed to just be the two-foot of bike lane, we've just taken the payment in lieu and not moved any of the curb or any of the sidewalk. So it'll, it'll remain there. It's there today, and it'll be there once they get done with their construction.
The question is, though, we're collecting that money with the idea that at some point we potentially would add the two-lane, two-feet, two-foot lane, in which case then we'd have to move the curb line. Will there be enough public easement to move the sidewalk back?
Yeah, there's, there's plenty of room for right-of-way. I'm sorry, I missed that part of it. But yeah, there's, there's lots of right-of-way out there.
Okay. The question I have is, we haven't, unless I'm wrong, I don't remember us in the last two months or three months talking about moving this from a four-lane median divided cross-section to a five-lane cross-section. So in some ways, this request seems a little bit premature because the council hasn't had the opportunity to vet this issue as we talk about the new comprehensive transportation plan. So my first question is, is what is the width difference between a five-lane cross-section and a four-lane median divided cross-section?
And so the, for the five-lane section, it's a 91-foot back-to-back section, and for a four-lane divided, it's a 100-foot back-to-back section with an 18-foot wide grass median. The grass portion of the median is 18-foot wide.
So if we were to convert, at some point, let's say this council or some future council wanted to have a four-lane median divided cross-section there, and we did not accept the payment in lieu or any easement dedication so that we could widen it to that cross-section, what would happen if we put a median in an existing fifth lane? If we said, "We don't want to have a fifth lane," what would that width be? I mean, would it be like 10 feet wide or something like that?
The, I believe the existing lane is 12-foot wide.
Okay.
And there's a foot and a half on either side of that, so it'd be 10, 10 and a half foot wide.
Okay, of a median. Okay. Which is not enough of a turning radius for a large vehicle, correct? Like, I seem to recall you need to have 18 or 20 feet to be able to make a full, like a full-size vehicle to be able to make a safe U-turn movement?
It's a little bit narrow, but I'd have to look at the geometry of the intersection to make a full determination. It's, it's close. 18-foot is definitely better than 10, but I couldn't say right offhand if there'd be a proper U-turn movement at the intersection if the median were built.
That's fair. I just, my only reservation is that I wasn't aware, and I apologize if I wasn't aware, but I wasn't aware that the council had made any kind of determination at this point that we wanted to move from a four-lane median divided cross-section to a five-lane, which is what we have today. So I feel like I would be premature in approving this unless you tell me that we've vetted this in the last six weeks as we've talked about different road cross-sections and I've missed it.
I think we're going to talk about it later tonight, in the work session, probably. I mean, we could.
Sorry, Russ, where are you going to?
Can I?
I don't think so. You have to...
Jerry or Juliet might be able to speak to it. If not, I can get sworn in.
When we talked about the thoroughfare plan, this has been several months ago, I want to say at least four months ago, maybe five months ago, we talked a little bit about the thoroughfare plan at that time. And one specific section that we did talk about was Highway 55. And the plan was originally recommended by staff to make this all a five-lane undivided roadway because that's the way it's built today, and it'd be very difficult to, and expensive to retrofit it to that standard. And at that time, counsel gave staff direction to, it was an important element of the plan if we had a median divided gateway coming in from the south from the apex side.
Do you remember that?
I do remember that, yes, ma'am.
I remember that, okay.
And so at the direction of counsel, we have added, left back into the plan, a segment of median divided roadway that comes from the, from the apex Cary border to the south all the way up to Turner Creek Road, which is just, just short of this particular property.
That's the pink road in that previous drawing?
Yes.
So what we had previously was everything coming, everything being five-lane, and then we responded back to you, said, "Nah, we really want to have a gateway. This is an important road. We'd like to have a median." And so what you did is you came back and you kind of met us halfway and said, "We'll do this as a four-lane section." So while it's looking unfamiliar to me, as I had not seen it as a four-lane and a five-lane.
Right. That is exactly.
Okay. All right. So I guess it really depends on the comfort level that the council has with that.
I just want to make sure that I understand. One more question. So basically, the road will remain as is. The proposal by the applicant is to leave the road remaining as is, as a five-lane with no median, and provide a payment in lieu for a two-foot bike lane if the town should at some point want to widen the road, move the curb, and move the sidewalk, and use whatever easement is there to rebuild the sidewalk.
Correct.
Which would be way more than $20,000.
Correct. We generally, we don't do incremental widening like this for a bike lane because it's, one, it doesn't, it doesn't have any practical purpose and almost could be a safety issue. But, but in practicality, of all payment looms we've had for... we've had for median-divided roadways, it's been a standard practice just to require not moving the curb, but whatever the differential cost would be for adding additional two feet of asphalt and things of that nature. All the other elements of those could be reimbursable anyway in the future because there's already curb and gutter and sidewalk out there. So, through a reimbursement agreement with the town, we would end up having to pay them anyway. So, we never really asked for that upfront, so. That's why we just do the two feet.
What is the easement width that we have here? Is it, or do we, are we already in ownership of the full 100-foot easement under the presumption that it's going to be a four?
Yes, I believe that corridor has sufficient right-of-way, more than 100 feet, I believe. The town actually did the sidewalk project in front of the site
I remember that, yeah.
About three years ago, I believe. And at that time, I believe we had a sufficient right-of-way to do it. Now, there were some slopes going down, so we were kind of confined in that. But I believe there was sufficient. Maybe the applicant's engineer can address that for you, but I believe there is.
The only reason I ask is because if some future council said, "You know, it's really important to us that we have this as a four-lane median-divided", I wouldn't want to have to go back. Not me, but some future council to go back and buy up easement to accomplish that.
Or if we determine that it's too expensive to add that two feet for just a bike lane and, hey, let's do off-road bike lane and use it for that, and we don't have any easement.
Right. Like, if we want to do like a cycle track or...
Right, which would be much safer than two feet on the side of a road where people drive 50 miles an hour.
Yeah.
Okay, so I've been made aware of the, when they developed the plan, there was actually sufficient right-of-way to do a four-lane median-divided roadway in excess of that. So, by narrowing it in, we have plenty of right-of-way if ever it wants to get implemented to that, a bigger standard.
Okay.
Yep.
The site plan that's on the screen in front of you is the approved site plan showing the required improvements for today's comprehensive transportation plan. It shows that widening within the existing right-of-way.
Okay.
And no additional right-of-way was needed at that time. So, we should be good.
Okay. If we did something like Lori was talking about, do we have sufficient easement to put in some kind of bike, off-road bike capacity? Yeah, path?
There'd be enough easement there.
There would, if you were to make this like a street-side trail.
Right.
We, I don't know if we would need that or not. I would have to look at that. I just don't know the answer to that. I know it's not on our master plan for a street-side trail, so we didn't ask for it. When we built the sidewalk, we didn't build it to that standard. I can't tell you with certainty that we would need easement beyond the current right-of-way to fit that in. That would...
It is somewhat typical to have a street-side trail or not uncommon to have it come in and out of the right-of-way, so on the subject site and then into the, meander into the right-of-way. And that's designed that way from the get-go at the plan approval stage, so there would be easements dedicated. That was not done here because that was not a requirement. So, the typical trail that would meander in and off-site would not be possible here because there's been no easement dedicated for it because the plan didn't require that.
So, we still have the easement. We're just not requiring them to build the extra road. What the request is to not require them to build the extra roadway width, but rather, in this case, to provide a payment in lieu for the two-foot bike lane. But we still have the easement. And it seems that it might be enough to go from like a sidewalk to a multi-use trail.
Yeah, let's say we add a five, four feet, right?
There's enough, there's enough right-of-way from the back of curb to the property line to where we could put, if we choose to put a street-side trail of 10 feet width, we could do it in that area.
I just want to make sure we had options that we weren't locking ourselves into.
Right, but just to be clear, I get complaints periodically from people who use that sidewalk along 55. I don't know what the utility strip is between the road and the sidewalk, but for the speeds on Highway 55, citizens do not feel comfortable with that amount of space, whether, I don't know what it is, a foot and a half, two feet. But even if it's like a standard two feet, it's, people feel like the sidewalk is too close to the fast-moving highway.
Sure.
So, I would not want to do something where we have to pave the utility strip to be able to accomplish because I know people would not be happy with that.
Right.
So, I just, I'd like to have that comfort that we have the capacity to put in the, a full bike path along there without having to eat into the utility strip and without having to go and buy from this HOA additional easement.
Well, certainly, again, since staff hasn't really looked at that, that may be some question you want to ask the applicant is, in their professional opinion, do they feel like they have that available? I feel like we do have that room in there, but I don't believe it's been fully vetted out from our standpoint.
That's an existing condition. So, you can see the width of the strip you're talking about.
I think the strip on that was, our standard was five feet of grass strip. And it may be a little bit narrower in other places, but I believe that's...
Yeah, it's definitely not five feet.
Particularly when you get up to the turn lane.
I've walked it because my citizens complained about it. I walked it, and it's definitely not five feet. But I didn't take a measuring tape to it to see what it is. It's not that wide. Okay, well, let's, why don't we ask Mr. Bell his opinion of this?
And the question again?
Okay, so the question is, is there enough right-of-way? Should the town decide to expand that sidewalk from what appears to be a five-foot sidewalk to a 10-foot wide, multi-use path?
Yes, there's 153 feet of right, excuse me, 153 feet of right-of-way that exist out there per our surveys along 55.
And the existing roadway with curb, from back of curb to back of curb is 91 feet?
Right.
Okay. That's 14 feet.
The sidewalk should be five feet. I've walked the sidewalk several times. It was actually installed by Towne of Cary maybe six or seven years ago, maybe.